Okay, good morning, everyone. Today, our invocation will be given by Pastor David Bendett from Rock City Church. Pastor?
Good morning. It's nice to see everyone today. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you so much for your kindness and your mercy, your grace and your love. We thank you, God, for entrusting us to lead our city well. Thank you, God, for everyone that we get to influence and impact with your love and your life and the wonder of who you are. Thank you that you've trusted us to carry your government forward in this nation and the nations of this world. Thank you, God, that your government rests upon our shoulders. And I pray that everyone here would be great stewards, great leaders, that they would carry your name and your love and your life well to this community. Thank you for wisdom. Thank you for the mind of Christ. Thank you for your presence that's here in this chamber. And we thank you so much, Lord, for your life that causes us to train, equip and care for those that are around us. And I thank you, God, for unity here with all the council members and the city manager and everyone that makes decisions. And I pray, Lord, that we would truly be united with the community, the pastors, the leaders, the business owners and all those that lead well and so desperately need you. And we thank you, God, for this time today and thank you, God, for being with us. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. And today, the pledge of allegiance to the state and U.S. flag will be led by Lorianna Vella.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Lorianna. And Lorianna is with Brownie Troop 9668. And she also brought council members some cookies. Oh, they're here, yes. Well, there they are. Thank you. Wow, you even delivered them. Thank you very much. We're gonna really enjoy these. Okay, so Ms. Huerta, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Palette Wahado.
Present.
Councilmember Roland Barrera. Roland? Mr. Barrera?
I forgot.
It is on.
He's back there.
It's just low. Hello? Okay, can y'all hear me? Councilmember Roland Barrera? I don't think his mic is on, but I know he's there.
He's back there.
Gil Hernandez?
Right here. Here.
Nice live voice. Okay. Gil Hernandez?
Here.
Michael Hunter?
Can't hear you all.
Really? Okay. All right, thank you, Michael. Sorry about that. We'll take care of that. Billy Lerma?
Here.
John Martinez?
Here.
Ben Molina?
Present.
Mike Pasly?
Here.
Greg Smith?
Here.
City Manager Peter Zanoni?
Here.
City Attorney Myles Rizley.
Here.
Mayor and Council, a quorum of the council and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Okay, great. So today, where is mine? Today, I presented a, well, a proclamation was issued, I should say, honoring Bill Vesey, our KIII meteorologist, for his retirement. I'd like to read that. So KIII chief meteorologist Bill Vesey's career has spanned 49 years in the world of broadcasting, welcoming everyone to his weather cast with the warm "Hola amigos." And Bill Vesey has served as chief meteorologist for KIII-TV from 1992 to 2021. Bill Vesey has become an honored household name in Corpus Christi synonymous with reliable weather forecasting through his professionalism, strong character and leadership. He is a man of all seasons who has shepherd, shepherded Corpus Christi through hurricanes, tropical storms, snow, sleet, hail, wind and rain, all while assuring us that he would be by our side to ride out any storm. And Bill Vesey is not only an outstanding meteorologist, but a devoted son, loving husband, wonderful friend, teacher and colleague, who is beloved by so many. Now therefore pursuant of the powers vested in me as the mayor of Corpus Christi, I do here proclaim, March 24th, 2021, Bill Vesey Day. So in Corpus Christi, Texas, and I urge all of my fellow Corpus Christi residents to join me in recognizing Bill's tireless commitment to providing coastal bend viewers with an accurate and trustworthy forecast. So we congratulate Mr. Vesey for his, for his contribution to Corpus Christi. We all know his name and will continue to, and we wish him well in his retirement. Okay, so we'll move on to public comment, Section F. Ms. Huerta, do we have any written public comment?
Yes, ma'am. You received some yesterday, and we gave you a few that came in this morning, those written comments. We also have two call-ins as well today. So we'll start the process with that in just a moment.
Okay.
Mayor and Council, I have Dr. Marcus Camia, President of Delmar College, on the line. Dr. Camia, will you please make your comment?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, everyone. This is Marcus Camia, President of Delmar College. I'm coming to you live from my office at 101 Baldwin, right here in Corpus Christi, Texas. I'd like to thank you, Mayor Wahado, council members, Peter and his team, for all that you do for our great city and in partnerships with Delmar College. I'd especially like to thank you all for the leadership and direction and support of the new Corpus Christi Police Training, Corpus Christi Police Department Training Facility on the Delmar College South Side campus. When Delmar College came together with its Board of Regents around the timeline of 2014 to 2017 and planned this campus, it was a plan of optimism and hopes of public, public, public partnerships and even public-private partnerships. And that was the goal of this 96 acres on the, on the south side, there at the corner of Yorktown and Rockville Roads. Fast forward to the meeting when City Manager Peter Zanoni came to me and, and started talking about the possibilities of other locations on the south side and, and talking about the prospects of being good friends and neighbors back there, I immediately moved to the opportunity to put this opportunity on the south side campus on the table for Peter and the city's consideration. Obviously, it's, the idea has been embraced by, by our city manager, his team, and especially Chief Markle. And that's one of the greatest things that has come of the subsequent meetings. And I think with the vision both of Mr. Zanoni and Chief Markle, that the opportunities before us are only beginning, council members and Madam Mayor. I think that the opportunities of growing this, this relationship that is steeped in policing and, and community service is a tremendous opportunity. What I'd especially like to comment on is that Chief's vision for changing the way policing is done and, and evolving it into the next centuries of policing is our opportunity that's in front of us. Lastly, council members and Madam Mayor, I'd like to just thank our Board of Regents as well for their collective support for this most important initiative here in our great city of Corpus Christi. Thank you.
Okay, and that, he was, Dr. Camia was speaking regarding item number 12 on the agenda today, just so that's clear. He'll be speaking regarding item number 15 on the agenda, the ordinance on gas rates. Mr. Patel, will you please make your comment?
Hello, Mayor Guado and members of the city council and staff. This is Neil Patel of CP2 Partners in Dallas, Texas. My comments are regarding Agenda Item Number 15 discussing the proposed ordinance increasing gas utility rates. Although the important details behind the numbers in this proposed ordinance are unclear and new information continues to become public, we think city staff are headed in the right direction to begin addressing the severe spike in natural gas costs from this nasty winter storm. But this is just the first step in reacting to issues within the gas department. We strongly encourage the council to take further action rather than reacting to another bad situation in the future. As you're aware, CP2 Partners has provided the city with a written proposal to purchase the gas department. This offer is supported by North Leaf Capital, a $15 billion global investor. Whatever your decision today, or on today's ordinance, we respectfully call on the city council to direct staff to engage the appropriate consultants and advisors to evaluate the sale of the gas department. Selling the gas department alleviates several problems for the city while also providing meaningful financial benefits of a really nice outcome. This includes approximately $70 million in immediate cash, but this amount excludes a future utility bond sale, which can certainly be discussed later. Roughly $2 million recurring annual cash payments for the general fund, commitment of more than $25 million in identified additional capital to modernize and enhance the city's gas infrastructure. In the process, the city can eliminate future debt, pension and operating liabilities. Now is the time for the city to explore the opportunity, which ends up bringing in over $125 million in real value to the city. Most importantly, the proposed rate increase does not address the tens of millions of dollars in future investment that is absolutely needed to do things such as replace aging pipes, expand the system as the city grows, or modernize the metering and billing system. Unfortunately, this rate increase is merely a reaction to a specific and likely preventable problem in the form of gas supply issues. While the, with the council's support, CP2 Partners is prepared to bring better commercial and strategic leadership to the system. Plus, we are prepared to make the necessary investments to create a 21st century gas utility system. As you're aware, CP2 Partners has provided the city with a written proposal to purchase the gas department. This offer is supported by North Leaf Capital, a fifteen billion dollar global investor. Whatever your decision today, on today's ordinance, we respectfully call on the city council to direct staff to engage the appropriate consultants and advisors to evaluate the sale of the gas department. Selling the gas department alleviates several problems for the city while also providing meaningful financial benefits of a really nice outcome. This includes approximately seventy million dollars in immediate cash. But this amount excludes a future utility bond sale, which can certainly be discussed later. Roughly two million dollars recurring annual cash payments for the general fund. Commitment of more than twenty-five million dollars in identified additional capital to modernize and enhance the city's gas infrastructure. In the process, the city can eliminate future debt, pension, and operating liabilities. Now is the time for the city to explore the opportunity, which ends up bringing in over a hundred and twenty-five million dollars in real value to the city. Most importantly, the proposed rate increase does not address the tens of millions of dollars in future investment that is absolutely needed to do things such as replace aging pipes, expand the system as the city grows, or modernize the metering and billing system. Unfortunately, this rate increase is merely a reaction to a specific and likely preventable problem in the form of gas supply issues. While with the council's support, CP2 Partners is prepared to bring better commercial and strategic leadership to the system. Plus, we are prepared to make the necessary investments to create a twenty-first century gas utility system. Finally, as a reminder, CP2 has already offered an upfront escrow deposit towards the city's consulting and feasibility costs to evaluate this proposal. Again, we kindly request that the city council study a potential sale of the gas department in greater detail. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Mayor, that concludes the public comment period.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next we'll go on to Item G, our city manager's comments and update. Mr. Zanoni?
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor and members of the council, I just have three items this morning. And I am, I am going to begin with talking about Easter, which is coming up in about two weeks. And so we know that Easter camping has been a tradition at La Bonte Park for many years. Unfortunately, last year because of COVID-19, we didn't allow it. And La Bonte and many of our parks were closed, as we are right in this, in a big spike of new COVID cases. But this year, as we see cases drop this time of year, and as more people are being vaccinated, we are going to open up camping at La Bonte Park this year for this Easter season. Camping overnight will be available beginning Friday, April second, through Monday, April fourth. That's a four-day period. And, but we have some changes in the business model to be mindful of COVID. We know that the virus and the pandemic is still here with us, and there are various strains that are not as easily handled with the vaccine. And so the layout at the park is changing a little bit this year compared to two years ago. We'll have thirty-three percent fewer pad sites across the park to provide greater social distancing. So we've expanded the campsite so that persons of fifteen or more will have more room to maneuver around each other. And then from each campsite, there's a six-foot social distance kind of space that, that is required by the Center for Disease Control. So normally, we have about a hundred and one persons camping out at La Bonte Park. With these new COVID safety protocols, there'll be sixty-two campsites. So a thirty-three percent reduction, but this is being mindful of the pandemic that's still here. We will be passing out two parking passes per campsite. And if patrons want to purchase additional ones, they can do that at a small cost. We are recommending one campsite per customer to provide more, more families than not to have this great opportunity to enjoy the park. The park certainly is beautiful there, following the Nuasis River. The city council recently approved, or in last year's budget approved, the planting of close to one hundred trees along that park. So I see it every weekend, and it's just a real night, real nice asset. There's RV parking sites as well. And similarly, we usually allow two campers or RVs per pad site. But to provide social distancing, we're allowing one RV per campsite this year. So just some details on, on the charges and how you sign up. The, there's a twenty-eight dollar fee for the three-night overstay. So if you stay one or three nights, still, it's twenty-eight dollars, a pretty nominal fee. For the RV campsites, that's fifty-five dollars for that three-night stay, and that's pretty decent. Reservations are open beginning today, the twenty-third of March, through April one. But we think they'll go pretty quick. So they open today, and they'll be open right through April one. And we're taking reservations through our website. No in-person reservations or any transaction at the actual campground, just again as a COVID safety protocol measure. Now, so that's some great news, and we, we hope the families have fun. We also want the families, though, to be mindful of some of the responsibilities at the park. So be careful of the brand-new trees. That's a big financial investment. We want those to grow for future generations. And so be mindful of the trees. Also be respectful of the park and your neighbors that are at the park. Pick up the trash and, and try to be respectful of your surroundings as well as other personal persons that are there. Now, last year, not only did we close La Bonte Park, but we also closed all of our big regional parks just to keep people away and keep people home. If you may recall, we were encouraging people to stay at home this time last year. But the city's other regional parks will be open this year, so people can go there for the, the holiday weekend or the, the Easter Day itself. That includes West Guth Park in City Council District One, the Waters Edge Park, Cole Park will be open this year in District Two, the Salinas Park in District, District Three, excuse me, Parker Park in District Four, Bill Witt and Lakeview Park in City Council District Five. So those will be open this year. We encourage our community to come out and enjoy the weather, especially if it's anything like these last couple of days. But again, be mindful of the social, social protocols that we have been talking about for many months when it comes to COVID. Okay, let me transition now to a little bit of work. So before we have fun next week, we do have to get some work done. And this week, we have two area plans that continue their development. These two are in Councilman Smith's District, District Four, the Flower Bluff Area Development Plan and the Padre Island Development Plan, Padre slash Mustang Island Development Plan. So even with COVID, our planning department and community and Councilman Smith have engaged in the development of these plans. We have area plans across the city. And this week's important because the Flower Bluff has a third community meeting on tomorrow at six o'clock. It'll be via WebEx at cctexas.com/flowerbluff. And that's at six o'clock. Also, beginning yesterday is a three-week online open house survey. And so same website, go to that, cctexas.com/flowerbluff. We encourage Flower Bluff community to engage in that online survey as well as participate in that third community meeting. And then Thursday, similarly with the Padre Mustang Island Area Development Plan, same thing. There'll be a third community meeting that'll be on Thursday at six o'clock. And the online survey also began on yesterday, and it'll go through April eleventh. That website for the Padre is the cctexas.com/island. Right, so Councilman Smith has been engaged, as has his community. We've had some real good turnout in Meeting One and Two, and we hope the same for the next two meetings that'll take place this week. Okay, and then the third item deals with a major institution that is, that their home is Corpus Christi. And I'm going to speak a little bit about them, and then their Executive Director, Tom Klassen, will share a few words as well. And that major institution is Halo Flight. And you probably all have seen the helicopters, especially if you're driving by spawn. And I did for many months. I saw that helicopter, and I really wasn't sure who it belonged to, until I got a call from Tom and his team saying, hey, can you come, come visit us? We want to tell you about our operation. And I'm glad I did, because it's, it's quite an operation, and its home is right here, is Corpus Christi. They provide emergency air services, not only to our city, but the, the region. Halo Flight is, their mission is to provide emergency medical transportation for critically ill or injured persons requiring medical or trauma facilities within the South Texas Service Area. Emergency assistance is provided to all persons regardless of their ability to pay. So they don't ask you first, hey, where's your insurance, right? Everybody gets on the Halo Flight if they need to. They've been in Corpus Christi for about thirty years, a major institution here in our community. Halo Flight's ambulance service is truly impressive, and you'll hear a little bit about it from me and then also from Tom. Their business model has allowed them to operate successfully in our community. And we, we want to thank them for being here and thank them for what they do in our community, not just with respect to the transportation service, but also in terms of jobs. They recruit and retain a highly skilled workforce, and they offer high-wage salaries. That's what we want in our community. They have a staff of fifty-four members, fifty-four team members are in that operation. That includes highly-trained pilots, critical care nurses. Every one of their flights includes, I don't know if it's two, at least one or two nurses. They have paramedics, maintenance personnel, and communications specialists. So it's a very impressive operation. They cover twenty-eight thousand square miles in twenty-six counties, so not just Nuasis County. They have four aircraft, and I forget the value of each one of those. Maybe Tom can remind us, but I think they're, it's a, it's a pretty big price tag per aircraft. And has a, has a very important stat. Last year in twenty twenty, they transported one thousand two hundred and thirty-five persons. So over a thousand flights last year in patient transports. They are, they are here in our community, and we want to thank them again, not only for saving lives, but for being here and being an important employer in our community. With that, let me introduce Tom. He's here with his team, his leadership team. Let me tell you a little bit about Tom. So Tom is the Executive Director of Halo Flight. He has, I have a whole page that I could have read about how many flights and where he's been, but we didn't want to take too, too much time. But he has nineteen years of history flying across the globe in various, various flight capacities. He has, he has over eleven thousand hours of flight time. But he feels that the past twenty-five years in transporting patients for Halo Flight has been the most rewarding. And Tom has been the Director of Operations since twenty-ten. He was promoted to Executive Director a year later. And we want to thank Tom for being here this morning. Thank you for reaching out to me and, and helping us share with the community what a great operation we have right here in Corpus Christi.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor, Councilmember. Thank you for having us and, and sharing about Halo Flight. Halo Flight is the only nonprofit air medical service serving South Texas. And we started from very humble beginnings. Back in nineteen eighty-seven, a tragedy struck down in Valfurious where a young lady was passed away in a long transport from Valve up to Corpus. And a group of citizens got together, pooled their money, rented a helicopter, and created Halo Flight to serve their community. Well, Halo Flight, two years later, moved to Corpus Christi to establish a better base of operations to service our community. You'll, you'll hear that a lot. That's a huge priority for us. We had one helicopter and a spare helicopter when I, I came to Halo Flight. And we really looked at how we served our community. And what we found that we needed was more helicopters, of course. So in order to provide better service, we found that the majority of the people that really needed our service were in our western area around Alice. So we moved a helicopter base out there. So instead of that ten- or fifteen-minute response time, it's five minutes, or they pull up to the helipad and we take off there. As we also evaluated our operations, we really found that the weather here in South Texas is not so friendly sometimes. We have a lot of fog, low clouds, weather. So what we did was we created an IFR infrastructure. That's instrument flight rules. We can fly through the clouds. And we created this highways-in-the-sky system that connected all of the spawn rural facilities with Shoreline, Memorial, Driscoll Children's Hospital. And this way, we can provide that added service even when the weather is bad. So, next slide, is someone running? Oh, there we are. This is an example of our Workhorse helicopter, Bell four oh seven. We have three of these. And next slide? This is our Bell four twenty-nine multi-engine helicopter. We picked this helicopter because it had that IFR capability, and, and we moved that aircraft to the Beeville Base, but it serves us all of our community in IFR infrastructure. Onboard these aircraft, we have highly-trained pilots, critical care nurse, critical care paramedic, backed up with the best maintenance staff in the industry. We also have Operations Control Specialists and all of our admin staff located right here in the city of Corpus Christi. Next slide, please. You can see here from this map, our service area, these rings show you a ten-minute response time. So when someone's having a stroke or a heart attack or, or is in an automobile accident, where that time is essential to get that patient from pre-hospital environment to the hospital, Halo Flight is there, and there in minutes, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Next slide, please. One of our best partnerships we have is we provide air ambulance services for Driscoll Children's. So we transport their team all over South Texas, from Laredo down to the valley, up to Galveston, wherever those, those kids need to go. Halo Flight might be a small organization, but we lead our industry nationally. We were the very first air medical service to have two-axis autopilots. And those autopilots were paid for by community support here in Corpus Christi. The Charity League raised two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to support that effort. And that led us in the country in putting those autopilots in our aircraft that were, you know, suggested by the NTSB to prevent accidents. We also had the very first ballistic windshields placed in our aircraft, because we have a lot of birds down here, and they come out of nowhere in the middle of the night. And we did suffer a, a bird strike one night, and fortunately, it didn't hit the pilot. We landed at Corpus Christi Airport. Our airport services were there to help us and transport the patient into the hospital. But really, the best thing that we do, we have the very first, in the world, single-engine, single-pilot IFR air medical helicopter. We just received that a few months ago. We just received our second one in, from Tennessee two days ago. And we should receive our last one to do a total fleet replacement by the end of the year. This is a, this is a twelve-million-dollar commitment by Halo Flight to invest in our community, to provide the most safe services that we can for our patients and our community. It costs a lot to operate these aircraft, and about twenty percent of our patients don't have the ability to pay. We, as you said, we don't certainly ask for an insurance card or find out. We, we get the call and we go. To kind of give a payback to our community, we have a Guardian Plan. And that, that's, on average, about thirty-five dollars per household. And that covers any out-of-pocket costs our patients might have. So any co-pays on the insurance they might have, we cover that with our Guardian Plan. For the people that don't have insurance, I mean, our bill's not going to be the biggest of their, their day, unfortunately. It's probably the worst day of their life. But we do have a debt forgiveness program that all people have to do is apply, and we, we wipe that. We don't want people to be devastated by the high medical costs and the high cost of our service when they can't afford it. I mean, we're here to serve our community. So in the future, we are building more of that IFR infrastructure to connect our communities. And we're making an investment in Corpus Christi by building a brand-new administrative building here. So I'll take some questions, if you'd like.
Thank you, Tom. I'd like to know if somebody would like to contribute to the organization. Where, where would they go?
Absolutely. You can go to our website. We have a contribute page there. Or Corey Bamer is our Director of Philanthropy. And we have some very generous people that, that help our organization out, that care about our community.
Well, it's, it's, it's so impressive that you don't, it, it reminds me of St. Jude's Hospital. They always say they don't, you know, there isn't, there isn't a patient they turn down because it's about the child, and it's about taking care of them, so you figure it out, so to speak. But was the thirty-five dollars, can you tell us, was that, is that a program?
That's a, that's a program, membership that we have.
Membership? That's, okay, right. So you can become a member for thirty-five dollars?
That's correct. And, and many businesses, like Flynn Hills Resources, cover all of their employees under that.
Right.
And so if we're, we fly those people that are covered by that, they have no out-of-pocket costs. And it really protects their financial freedom on, you know, a big costly day for them medically.
Okay, okay, great, great. Thank you. Councilman Pusley?
Yeah, Tom, good to see you again.
Good to see you.
I just wanted to say that I am a member. My family joined a long time ago. And I would encourage anybody who has not taken advantage of this, this is the cheapest insurance you will ever buy. And you get a card, and, and my wife and I pay for our whole family to be members. And it's a great service, and thank you so much for what you do for this community. It's, we're very fortunate to have Halo Flight in our community.
We are.
Thank you very much.
We are. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, we'll all join.
Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
That concludes my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Zanoni. Okay, Easter, where are we?
Mayor, I wanted to ask, Peter, is the, the park up at Lake Corpus Christi, I'm assuming it'll be open for the Easter weekend as well?
Yes, yes, sir. Sunrise Beach Park. Yes, it's open, sir.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, we have no board and committee appointments today. That's Section H. So we'll move on to Section I. Ms. Wirtha, is that where we might be able to address a council member issue?
Yes, ma'am. Section I of the agenda allows for something called a motion to reconsider. So a motion to reconsider, it's a parliamentary- So a motion to reconsider, it's a parliamentary procedure in which, it's a motion to consider a second time the vote on a previously adopted item. And we do have a, and our policy, our council policy says that any member of the council who voted with the prevailing side on any question may move its reconsideration no later than the next regular meeting. And reconsideration shall require a two-thirds vote of the council. So at this time, we, Councilmember Lerma had expressed a desire to reconsider an item from March 16th.
I'm sorry?
I have a point of order on this.
Point of order, okay.
This is just listed as explanation of council action. There's nothing listed here to take action on anything or?
If you look, there's the last three lines, there's a specific reference to motion to reconsider. It says, "A motion to reconsider may be made at this meeting of a vote at the last regular or subsequent special meeting. Such agendas are incorporated herein for reconsideration and action on any reconsidered item." So this is the section where motions to reconsider.
The last three, the last three lines of what?
Right here, sir. See the italicized part? I don't know if you see that on the iPad, but it's, it is on the agenda.
Okay, I, I, I just don't, I don't agree that that's properly listed, but okay.
Okay, so with that, Ms. Huerta, I guess, Councilman, does he need to bring up what it is?
Yes, so just so the council is aware, my understanding from Councilmember Lerma, he's wanting to reconsider item 28 on the March 16th agenda, which is the resolution opposing any legislative, any legislation that expands authority of the Port of Corpus Christi authority in Neises County. This was the resolution that was passed after executive session.
Okay, so does he need to make a?
Yes, he does. Mr. Lerma, would you like to make a comment about that?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity.
Sure.
Councilmembers, I would just like to, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the resolution opposing the legislation that expands the authority of the Port of Corpus Christi. After reviewing the resolution over the last week, I believe this resolution will negatively impact the economic development in District 1. So at this time, I, I make a motion that we reconsider the resolution of item 28 from last week's meeting.
Okay.
So is there a second for that motion to reconsider?
May I second it?
Yes, sir. Okay, okay.
Okay, so there's?
So it's seconded, so now at this time, we would need six affirmative votes. That's two-thirds of the council. And of course, Mr. Hunter is abstaining, abstained last time. But we would need six votes of the council for this motion to reconsider to, to pass. If it passes, then we consider the resolution anew. And then that would allow Mr. Lerma the opportunity, his intent is to, to change his vote.
Okay.
That's what he would like to do.
So I should do roll call vote?
All right. So for passage of the motion to reconsider item 28 on the 316 agenda, Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Barrera, can you hear me?
Yeah, I don't think their speakers working there.
Darn. I thought, I understood it was working. Hello?
No.
Okay, thank you. Hernandez?
Aye.
Okay, Hunter abstains. Lerma?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Molina?
Aye.
Pusley? Juarez? Okay, so it fails.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would just like to say that I appreciate us being able to bring that up. Thank you so much for the opportunity, ma'am.
Absolutely, it's your right, thank you. Okay, we're gonna... Where are we? Consent items?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item six.
Item six, okay. Anyone else have anything to pull? Items number one through 14 are our consent items.
And Mayor, councilmembers will be abstaining on, oh, I'm sorry, but on?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, we're having problems with the audio, I mean, the, the, the audio back here, but I, I, we need to pull, I need to pull, I have to recuse myself from item four, so I need to have that item pulled, so that way I can, I can recuse myself.
Okay.
Okay.
And then Councilmember Smith.
Madam Mayor, I need to recuse myself on item 10.
Item 10, okay, anyone else? Okay, so let's?
Mayor, if we can pull item 12 for discussion.
Number 12, okey-dokey. Okay, so let's start with number six, Mr. Zanoni is?
Well, number four would be?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I go in order of, I write them, pardon? Yes, we can, I'm sorry, yes. Thank you, Councilman. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of item number four, number six, numbers 10 and 12.
Do I move?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Okay, the motion carries. Okay, let's start with number four then.
Right, number four. That was, what was that one? That's just for recusal purposes?
Oh, number four's for recusal, right. And as is number 10.
Right.
I make a motion to approve item number four.
Second.
Okay, any, any, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
And Barrera abstains.
And Barrera abstains. The item, I'm sorry, the motion carries. Okay, item number 10 is also, who is, Councilman Smith is recusing on number, item number 10. Do we have a motion?
I'd like a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Item number six, please.
Yes, ma'am.
And item number six, I'm sorry, I'm just going to state for the public to know, this is a public hearing on the Northwest Boulevard Corridor Plan. Mr. McGinn or Mr., Councilman Lerma?
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. This item, the corridor for 624, after talking to several business owners in the area and other residents out in the northwest area, there seems to be some, some issues or some concerns on, on this project. As far as, they don't think it's, there's enough appropriate lighting. And they're talking or making comments to me that the right side, if you're going out towards, towards 624, the right side, it's got all utilities, it has the sewage, water, all, all the things that you need, amenities. The left side of that, which is, is a question that business owners are bringing up to my attention, and I need to bring it up to the city because I, I don't understand, the left side of 624, which is the side that I guess is towards Robstown, I guess?
Like the way the Chick-fil-A is on that side?
Yes, sir. The left side, but further out, okay?
Right.
Those businesses, those business owners are the ones that are bringing this up to my attention. There is no city water. There is no city sewage. They have nothing but ditches that fill up with water, mosquitoes, you know, different things because it doesn't drain properly. Well, my question, or my concern is, in the plan, that side doesn't seem to be giving the sewage, the water, and why is that? Is, is that in our city limits or is it not? That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, right, that's a great question and thanks for bringing that to the community's attention. So the, the city of Corpus Christi provides water and sewer to the opposite side and a little bit closer to 77. But there's two other water providers over there, two other water districts that provide water to that side that the Chick-fil-A is on. They provide the water, sewer. And then some of that area is in the county, so those ditches, it's kind, that side has like a meandering boundary line of either you're in the city, you're not in the city, you're in the city as a water customer, you're not.
See, and I think that's the confusion that a lot of people have out there.
Right, yes, sir.
It distracted my attention on it.
Yes, sir, it's, we can show you the maps, we'll sit down with you. It's a little bit of a problem for development. We've, we wanted to kind of take over some of those fledgling water districts. So that's not, it's, it's something we'd have to have obviously some conversation with. I think one of them is the Robstown Water District. There's another one, I forget the name of it, but for future development, we know that some bigger developments have wanted to go in on that side. We've actually sat down with them to say, look, we'll try to bring our water service to you as a more reliable utility. So we've already had those conversations in the past two years, knowing that growth is going to happen up there and that things like grocery stores are going to be important. We know that we, they want a reliable water provider and they see that in the city of Corpus Christi, so.
So this plan doesn't include that at this point, is that what you're saying?
It only includes the limits of the city of Corpus Christi. And we can only address our water customers, so we can't, we can't address Robstown Water District. And I think is Violet up there, there's another one?
River Acres.
River Acres. That area was rarely ruled, as, as you all know, Councilman Lerma and Pusley. And so those other water providers kind of grabbed territory before the city of Corpus Christi could get it, I think is one way of looking at it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so it sounds like it's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, ma'am, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, it sounds like it's something that isn't, that specific issue isn't something that can be addressed in this plan. Correct, Mr. Zanoni? That specific issue is not, or?
Right, no, because it's, we only address what the city, what the city's jurisdictions are in this plan, right?
But maybe we can work together to see, you know, how we can work with the other water distributors right there.
Weekend, right.
That's what we, I think we need to do.
Yeah, I think that's real important because this plan, I mean, to a point, I like the plan, but I just have some other concerns about that. Because, I mean, we're only going to be working on one side, but yet we're working the whole 624 corridor. And we're just, it's, it's perceived that we don't care about that side of the businesses.
Well, we need to, we'll engage them, Councilman Lerma. We're gonna, I want to get up there again when we have the Business Association meeting. Former Councilman Roy, I guess is the new president, he called me last week.
He's finally, he's finally got someone out there, yes.
Yeah, so that's great. I told him you and Councilman Pusley were going to invite us up there when we have the first meeting. So that's, that's in part what that is, is we need to, we need to educate them a little bit more, communicate with them. But we're not, we're not, we're open-minded to talking to these other water districts, no problem. And that is one of the, that is one of the issues that you, I'm glad you brought it to our attention again because it needs some attention. And for long-term sustainable growth, that's something that's going to have to be addressed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, great.
But lighting, and then just one other thing, Mayor, lighting, Councilman Lerma is noted in the plan from last meeting.
Right.
So we're going to put a, a bigger emphasis in this final plan on pedestrian lighting and vehicular lighting. More lighting is critical. There's references in the plan to lighting, but we need to, we need to document it more and accentuate it more in the final document.
Well, I appreciate that, just, I, I'd like to, you know, once you get that done, I'd like to take a look at it, you know, I would greatly appreciate that. Because those are the concerns I have from the individuals that I have spoken to out there.
Yes, sir.
You know?
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Pusley, do you have a remark?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I agree with Councilman Lerma that, Dan, I've had a little bit of a burr under my saddle about this study. Before I was elected to this council, I was asked by the Northwest Business Association to serve as their representative at the beginning of this. And I guess my biggest concern about this is that we hired somebody that had never visited Corpus Christi before to, to develop an area development plan. Because the very first meeting we had, I was asking them a question and I could tell they had no clue. And I said, well, have y'all visited the site? And they said, well, we've actually never been to Corpus Christi. So I, I just don't understand why we continue to go hire people who have no relevance or no background with respect to how traffic flows are and what our city looks like to do that. But that's a discussion for another day. I, I had entertained the ideal of tabling this today until we had an opportunity to meet with the Northwest Business Association, now that they have a new president and all that. But I guess my question to you, Dan, would be, if we go ahead and approve this today, can we come back and make changes to it as we see fit to do so? As long as we're able to do that, then I, I think if Councilman Lerma's okay with it, I'm okay with approving it. And then we can come back and, and, but I would say that this, this plan is highly subject to change because I, I've not been impressed with the work that was done here at all.
I mean, to answer your question, yeah, absolutely, all of our planning work can, can be updated, modified as market conditions change, a new project comes into a certain area. We can always revisit these, these planning projects.
Right, can I just add, Mayor, one other thing? So Councilman Pusley and Lerma, this is, this was done, and I know it can be improved upon because we asked for it to be done and the council approved it in the budget two years ago. When I first got here, I was driving by Cal Allen every day in my daily commute. And that community told me, one of my first meetings I had with them, my first week, don't forget about us up here. And, and you can if you kind of live in the south side or if you have no reason to go up there. So I haven't forgot about them. And we, that's why we put monies in the budget for year one to do this study. This is the first time we, we have ever had a study for that corridor.
No, I'm, I'm glad you did the study, that's not my intent of the comment.
Right.
I, I'm very happy that we have something.
Right.
Because you're absolutely correct, you know, we, we sort of get forgotten in the northwest.
Right.
Yeah, no, no, same here, I just want to make sure that you understand that I'm not against the growth, we need positive development, don't get me wrong. I just have some concerns about it. I'm not really against the plan, it's just I have some concerns because of the people that I've spoken to.
Yeah.
You know, I feel comfortable of going forward with this plan as long as we're able to, to add or subtract or do whatever we need to do to it, you know?
Right.
And, and I greatly appreciate that you're saying that you're not going to forget about us out there.
Yeah, I know.
You know, and don't worry about it, I won't let you forget us, okay, to be honest with you.
Mr. Zanoni's not forgetting any district at all. But I'd also like to comment, and I think this absolutely is the right place to address, something you just made mention of, Councilman. There's a process by which we develop, by which we implement these area development plans. We don't get to choose a, a company or a, a business to do these. I want, I want you to please explain the process and include that staff is involved in this process for just that reason, that sometimes these people are from out of town because we may not find that particular service, if you will, here. I mean, I, I don't know, but I know that by law, we have to put it out, we can't say we, we're going to hire someone from Corpus Christi. But please, I would like for you to explain that to us because I don't want there to be a, a view that, that we're hiring people from out of town who don't know anything. What is the process when they do come here? Because we do hire them. And we've done many area development plans, and I know how involved you, you are as well as your team. So let us know about that, please.
Well, first, we're, we're kind of a rare breed, us planners, AICP certified planners. We actually don't have a firm, I mean, there's, Freesia Nichols has offices all over the state, but they don't, actually don't have any planners in town. There is, there's no firm in town that actually has a certified city planner on staff. So everyone that comes to work in Corpus from these consultant firms are coming from San Antonio, Houston, Dallas to, to assist us. And we do go through a process, we, we go through RFP process, just like the designs for engineering and street road projects, that type of thing, so. And we actually, we don't really get a whole lot of submittals, to be honest, just because there's the location in getting down here. So we, we actually have limited folks that are even submitting for these. So we have a small pool, but we're, we do get, I think, pretty good submittals. This last firm is well represented and well, you know, regarded in the country for their work, so. But we do go through the same process as the engineering does and their selection of, of consultant firms to, to assist. So typically, you know, we had four projects, I think kickoff right at the beginning of the COVID kind of pandemic in that March, April. So we had to switch gears pretty, pretty good, that they had minimal opportunity to, So we had to switch gears pretty, pretty good, that they had minimal opportunity to visit our community when that first started. So it was a little bit of a different process and we, I think pivoted pretty good with the way we handled our public outreach and engagement. In fact, I was on a call, a national call that explained how we did our South Side and London projects as they were being, and I'm sorry, the Island when we first kicked off. So people were looking at the way we were doing things across the country. And so we were, you know, we were, I think, handled it pretty well in the way we engaged and we were happy with the feedback that we've gotten in all our projects really so far, so. If that answers your question exactly.
It does. How do you engage the public in that area? I mean, now that we can't bring them, we used to bring them together, you know, in a gym or some center, how do we do it now?
Well, we're, we've moved entirely to the kind of these virtual meetings that we're setting up, either Zoom, WebEx, but then we're also broadcasting those on our Facebook, City's Facebook Live page, along with our YouTube channel. And then we're recording those and then if you can't make that particular meeting, the recording is going to be available for you. And that's all the projects, so if you miss a meeting, no worries. You can come watch it at your leisure. And then we typically are having a survey that would follow that, so you can provide your input through that survey mechanism. So we've used a few different platforms now that are becoming very popular for cities to utilize, they, you can provide feedback on multiple of issues. I think looking at the stormwater fee, impact fee, different ways people can provide input via this web platform. So it's becoming pretty standard, you know, in cities that we're kind of evaluating in our different projects. So there's, you know, I think this is really kind of taught us, I don't think the public meeting is going to go away, I think that will certainly be still part of it, but this virtual experience is allowing people that couldn't attend those meetings, that have kids, that just couldn't get out of the house, it provides them an avenue to provide their comment and learn about the different issues facing the city. So in my profession, I think this is, is going to stay with us moving forward. So I think this experience has been good for me, good for our department and how we engage and get feedback from the community.
Right, okay. Oh, Councilman, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention and I understand the process. And, and I thought the process was okay, Dan, you know, the WebEx meetings and the Zoom meetings and all that, obviously, sometimes it's better to have public meetings but because of COVID. And that was just at the beginning of the COVID pandemic and so we had no choice. But I guess my disappointment was when we had our very first meeting online with the firm that was doing the planning, they had not, they were, they were making presentations to us about ideals that they had, but they had yet to visit the site. And I would just have thought that working with our city staff, that they would have made the effort to come here, to look around, to drive up and down Northwest Boulevard. Because one of the things that they clearly did not understand when we started having those initial discussions was the traffic problems that we had on Northwest Boulevard. They were more focused on making this a scenic drive-through area and that's, that's good, that's fine, but that was the reason why I made the comments I did. And I apologize if I hurt anybody's feelings, I didn't mean to do that. But I sometimes shoot from the hip and you have to excuse that, but I, I just want to reiterate that this is a start, this, and I guess, Dan, you would say this is a guide that we will use as we develop the Northwest Area Development Plan. And we hope to get, we did get good participation in the early stages of it. I think our participation kind of waned toward the end, but we want to continue to seek that input from the business owners and people who own property in the Northwest area and especially along our corridor there. We have some, some major issues as Councilman Lerman brought up and hopefully we'll get some of those resolved when we find the money to do so. But Peter, to go a little further in your comments, there are some areas past the city limits that we really need to take a close look at with respect to future development. Because some of those are developing just short of the Wild West sort of planning. And, and I, you know, that was a question I always had when I was Commissioner, those areas are in our ETJ. And it seems like we have no control over what's going on there whatsoever. And maybe that's, maybe that's the law, but those areas located in our ETJ are being highly developed now along that Northwest corridor.
Okay.
And with that, and with that, Mayor, I move to approve item six.
Okay, do we have any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinty, yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but on, on item 10, we voted on item 10 and Councilmember Smith abstained. You meant abstain on, I thought it was 12, correct, the police academy training item?
No, 10.
Okay.
Oh.
So you stated 10, but you meant 12, right? So, okay, so we voted on.
Okay, so you'll, well, that's okay, we vote, well, do we need to re, do you?
I pulled 12 anyway.
Yeah, but do you want to?
Yeah, no, that's fine, but the vote, I know you meant abstain on 12, yeah.
Or does it?
Okay, so if that's okay with the council, we're, item 10, so we vote, actually voted on item 10 and he did not abstain, he voted aye.
Okay, so item 12?
So now we're on item 12 and he's abstaining on 12.
Okay. Okay, great, okay, well, let's go to item 12, please.
Go ahead, yeah, Jeff Edmonds is going to go over item 12. This is a, this is a very important project, less than six months since the vote has approved the 2020 bond program. This advances the design services for the police training academy. We know that the one that we use today, that Chief Markle and his team uses is woefully inadequate. In fact, just one example is we have to have porta-potties outside for the cadets to use because the facility doesn't have enough inside, so that's just one example. So this will be design services to build a brand-new, state-of-the-art facility that's about three times the square size of the current. It's also being done, as you heard the president of the school of Delmar College talk about earlier, on the South Side campus of Delmar. And this is to help taxpayers, will be benefiting from a lot of the infrastructure that exists on the campus and we save taxpayer dollars by doing that. It also gives the cadets the opportunity to continue their professional education development. They'll be right there on campus and they can take additional classes and increase their degree certifications. So it's a great project overall, it's a local architect firm, Philip Ramirez with Turner and Ramirez and Associates was selected after a competitive process. And I think I'll turn it over to Jeff at this point, or the council member that pulled it, to see if there's any other questions.
Okay, Jeff Edmonds, Director of Engineering Services, and I have a brief presentation to run through. So next slide. Most of you recall, this is a Proposition C project on bond 2020. And this was one of the changes that we had to make to get within the budget on the bond. We put design dollars in there for two projects, there's no construction dollars on the bond, but there was $2 million on Prop C for public safety and the two projects on there were the Fire Station 3 replacement and the new police training academy. Next slide. So as the manager mentioned, the current facility is out of date and really inadequate for, for their current use. Next slide. For those of you that don't know, it's located on Corona Drive, this is, it's right near the intersection of Corona and Embassy Drive. And there's some photos inside of the building. It's somewhat cramped and really just doesn't have adequate space for all the functions that it's trying to serve. Next slide. There's also a very small site, there's inadequate parking on the site. And the building is showing its age, it's starting to have problems. Next slide. So the contract with Turner Ramirez is just over a million dollars for the design. The project is proposed for a five-acre site, almost across the street from Fire Station 17. We're targeting between 24,000 and 27,000 of space in a two-story building that includes training classrooms, administrative offices, resource rooms, a library, break rooms, physical training areas, an outdoor running track and secure area for parking patrol cars. It's going to match the campus aesthetics and as manager mentioned, Turner Ramirez is a local firm and they're also the designer for the rest of the Delmar South Campus. Next slide. So there's been some work already done to help advance the project. We've completed traffic impact analysis and environmental studies, geotechnical investigation and the site is pretty much ready to, to go. We're also going to be able to utilize the central physical plant of the campus, which is going to help save some money on construction. And there's some synergies there because of being co-located with campus, it'll help enhance opportunities for people to further their education over at Delmar. It's also going to be able to function as a regional training center, training people from agencies other than our own. Next slide. This slide illustrates the site, as I mentioned, just across the street from Fire Station 17, five-acre tract. Next slide. These are some renderings of the Delmar campus. This isn't actually the facility we're proposing for the training academy, this is the other, other facilities there, but we're going to design something that's going to fit in with the aesthetic of the campus. Next slide. Again, just a rendering of, of the campus when it's completed. And I stand ready for any questions.
Councilman Hernandez?
Okay, thank you very much and I want to say, starting off, that I think Turner Ramirez is a fine company and they do very good work and I have no issues with their selection. However, I'm a little concerned about the process and somewhat lack of standards from previous processes. For example, there was 13 statements of qualification received and two that were selected, but there was no matrix as to point systems or anything in the agenda memo or at least none that I saw. Is there a reason why that wasn't included? No?
All right, well, I'm, I'm calling in a lifeline with Josh at Contracts and Procurement. They oversaw that process.
Okay, so this also within the agenda memo, it says that the, there was interviews, two selected were for interviews, but I'm guessing, are we starting to do interviews for all of these selection processes? Or is there a specific dollar amount that's specified for which ones you do interviews for and which ones are in the selection process?
I think we're doing it for high-impact projects because.
What is, what is a high-impact project?
I don't know that we've got a good definition, I mean, we do a lot of engineering selections, some of them very small, very routine, very commodity. I don't think that those are necessarily need to have interviews, but something like, like this, this is a marquee project.
Okay, well, if I can ask the city manager or your department to have some sort of standard for us to know which projects go through a more stringent selection process? Because there's even a step beyond that, like with peer review, right? If you wanted to select somebody for a really large project.
So we, so the dollar value or the community impact are the, are the two justifications for why we'll do interviews. So if this, if it's several million dollars or if it has a significant community impact, we'll do interviews. We're working on redrafting the purchasing policy guidelines today to include more of that language. So right now, it's anything really in the bond program most likely would have a interview, both of the, if I can finish, both for the design and the construction. But then you could have a less, less dollar valued project, but it has a significant community impact, meaning a lot of people will see it or use it, something like that, we would want to interview firms as well.
Okay, and that's fine if, I would, you know, it's just, you're looking at, at these projects as they come in and they're different in every, almost every time.
Not necessarily.
Well, I mean, this, and we're following a new process, I guess, now.
We're following one that I've been working on for two years, right? Where we want to interview, in the past, we didn't even interview, so.
If you can, provide us that standard.
We will.
So we know what to look for.
Right.
That way, you know, there's, it's a consistent flow of information.
Right, we're working on that now, Councilman. I'm having, based on our meeting last week, we're going to be conducting a thorough review of our purchasing policies. I'm going to actually hire an outside consultant to come in to help us. And part of that work will include having more detailed written procedures. We do have some, but they're not adequate for the size of the city.
Okay, and it says, city manager's office, a non-scoring member, I guess that was with?
That was the chief of staff, right? So the entity of first question was, were these, were the 12 written proposals scored? The answer is yes, and they'll explain it. And then the two finalists, the two that had the best and highest points and were closest to, those were interviewed. The other 10 didn't come close to that point score. So they interviewed in person the finalists, the two finalists, based on their highest scores that they got. So every, every proposal, every written proposal was critically reviewed and had a score. And then the two top finalists were interviewed for the final selection.
Okay, well, that said, I don't know what the scores were.
Well, they can, you guys have a score, come on, Josh.
Okay, while we're waiting for that, I guess, on the interviews, was your office involved in the interviews as well?
The city manager's office?
Yes.
Right, yes, so the chief of staff, Michael Rodriguez, participated, but was a non-scoring member in the interviews.
Okay.
Who else was on the interview panel? Jeff, do you have that?
Asset management has someone, I believe Charles Mendoza was on there, Rotten was on there.
Go to the microphone so they can hear.
Josh Rotten, interim Contracts and Procurement Assistant Director. Was Charles Mendoza, myself, Michael was a non-scoring member, we had Radna from engineering and Sarah Minios.
Okay.
So it's got a diverse interview panel and scoring panel.
Okay, just as a matter of information, what I'm looking at is making sure that the process is clear, transparent, and everybody understands what the standards are, what requirements are. I, you know, and then from a decision-making process, also having more information is better. So if we can have a standard procedure or a standard way of doing things that we can look at and make judgments from, I'd be much appreciated. Maybe we'll go through these quicker. Other than that, that's all the questions I had and I asked that we make a motion to approve.
Actually, we have a comment. Councilman Pusley?
Yes, Mayor. I guess, just to kind of reiterate, and Jeff, you and I had this conversation the other day. I'm like Councilman Hernandez, I always want to see the matrix and I always want to see how your scoring takes place. So if it's 20% for this and 20% for that, or whatever the matrix percentages are, I do want to see that. It gives you.
Do you need to see the name of the person that did the scoring or can those be anonymized?
I could care less who scored it, I just want to know how you scored it and what the matrix looks like between the individual. And you do that on some of them, it's just that some you don't.
Yeah, Councilman Pusley, that should have been included in the material.
Yeah.
And if you all want, you can delay the vote till we get that printed out.
No, 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 no.
We can hand it out at this meeting and then you can, you'll have it.
I, Councilman Hernandez made a motion, I want to second it. But I'd also like to hear from Chief Markle to see if he has any comments about this facility and what he thinks about it and hopefully they're excited about it.
No hold needed, Councilman.
An understatement.
Chief Markle, Police Department. I'm absolutely excited about it, this was an opportunity of a lifetime, it's a legacy program for everybody here involved. Our last academy has been there, we've had it for 40 years, it's a throw-down building, it's a, it's an example of the habit we've had in this city of jumping from building to building like crabs, no offense, but there's been no investment in your academy. And I've said this before, we are currently at about 950 applicants for this next academy. Tremendous, tremendous opportunity here to join a stellar police department. But we do that in spite, in spite of the academy and the training facilities that we, that we offer. When I bring in females from around the country and we staff 30 to 40%, and you see this in our graduation, and I tell them, hey, you got to run outside in the rain and use a porta potty. It's ridiculous. You all, the city manager, have recognized that, right? And you've, and you've actually done something to address it. And it makes me proud to be part of it, it makes me proud to just watch it even, watch this process go. And how many people have rolled up their sleeves and said, hey, let's get it done? Because an academy is, I said it in graduation, your most obvious ambassadors are your police officers. And what will define a city is how your community is treated and how well your office, and that's determined by how well your officers are trained and how big of an investment they have in your, in your city. So yes, I am extremely happy with this, I'm extremely happy with our city manager and the council who have supported this, and Marcus Command, Delmar, who have, who have accepted it. I think that's great. And we'll get through whatever, whatever issues we need to get through to get it done, I'm confident in that. You know, we're, I say we, because I want to be included, we're a bunch of smart people here. here. You all are intelligent, and you can work your way through that, and I'm extremely happy, proud to see this project move forward. I hope I didn't overstate that, but that's how I feel.
No, you didn't, and that is very true. And Peter, you, Mr. Zanone, is who really recognized that need.
He did. He actually went out and, he called me up, and he said, hey, I got an idea. And I said, oh, that's a terrific idea.
Right, right.
And we have a bad habit here, and I've been subjected to myself, and that is, I'm not going to ask because it's not going to happen, right? That's been, it's true.
It's a new day, Chief Markle.
It's been that way for years, and hey, Pat, we're here, you know, Pat's been here for 43 years, and she could probably tell you the dozens of budget requests we put in for new academy, right? You know, year after year, and sometimes you just stop because it can't happen. I get it, the funds are funds, and you got to have priorities, but y'all have found a way to move this forward, so...
Well, Chief, I want to tell you how much I appreciate your remarks, and Peter, I want to congratulate you and your staff. I mean, this is a wonderful opportunity for us to take advantage of working together with one of our other local governmental entities, Delmar College. I want to thank Delmar College and Mark Escamia and everybody there. I mean, we would have had to go out and acquire this property somewhere, and there's a, you know, a whole level of expense in doing that, and so that we get to save our taxpayers, and this is a great deal for our police force, and...
It's a big thing.
It's a big deal.
I'll tell you a story, if you don't mind, real quick. You don't mind. When I came on this department, we were at the old police station, right, at Martin Luther King, and we dispatched from down in the basement, if you remember that. Have you ever got to visit that? So you remember how it happened?
As a guest, I mean...
You called in, you called in, right? And the dispatcher would answer the call, and if it were a priority call, they wrote the information on a red card, they put it on a conveyor belt, and it went back to a radio where they dispatched the call. And we went, that's right out of the 1930s, right? So we went from that system into the new building, where they built this with a CAD system in conjunction with the RTA and Nuasis County. And we went from the most antiquated to the most progressive dispatch center in the state, right? In one fell swoop. And that is exactly how I feel with this, with this proposal, with what we're doing right now. We're going to go from the most antiquated, right, to one of the most advanced and comprehensive, you know, not just in the building, but being attached to a college to have facilities to get credit back. When I came on, Delmar came out and taught in the academy, and I left the academy with 15 real hours of Delmar College credit, a whole semester. I want to get that back. We want to get that back. There's a whole host of things that we want to bring into this new way of thinking, you know, integrated into the community, being accepted as a learning student, not an isolated building somewhere where we're doing our own thing. So, again, I know that's a heck of an example, but it...
No, that's great.
It's true, it's true. And Chief Markle, it is, it starts with leadership.
It does.
It really does. And you said it perfectly. You have to let them know what is needed.
Of course.
And that goes back to our manpower. And I'll take that back there from my 2016. Manpower is essential. We've already, the three of us have had meetings, but that's the other thing that was always put aside, always put aside, and it will no longer...
Not just the other thing, it's a huge thing. And, but people are listening, y'all are listening, city manager's listening, and you're acting on it, so...
Yeah, thank you.
I'll leave it at that. Thank you so much.
What are the plans for the old property, Peter? Are we going to declare that excess, or...
The Corona property, Chief?
We put in, we've come up with a couple ideas. We don't want to get rid of it. It's actually, you know, it's an exoskeleton concrete structure, needs a roof, exoskeleton, right? So we thought about transitioning our dispatch center over there. That's one of the proposals that's banging around in our head, and there's a couple of different uses we could find with that building.
Okay, good deal. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion. Wait, who made the motion?
I seconded it.
Okay. You seconded it? Okay.
He did.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
And Smith abstains.
And Councilman Smith abstains. Okay, and that would be all of our consent, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to move on to Section K, no, item number 17, our municipal court judge appointments. Let's see here, hang on.
We have item 15. Actually, first reading ordinances are first.
We have an executive session on this.
Yeah, we do, I'm sorry. I'm going to skip down. Section N, first reading ordinances, items 15 and 16, pardon?
Correct, so on the, we can do 15, 16 is in conjunction with an executive session that'll be held at 1:30.
Okay. So item number 15 is an ordinance amending the code of ordinances to mitigate the gas bills from February's extreme weather event for residential customers effective January 1, 2021. Does staff have a presentation? Okay.
Will do, Madam Mayor, is included in the board packet?
Pardon?
It's included in the agenda packet.
Okay, wonderful. Yes, thank you.
Is there a way we can get it on the monitor?
Okay.
Roger.
AV is going to put up the presentation, Constance? Okay. No, it's too late, man. How come they wanted the agenda book?
Okay, if we wait just a moment, the AV department's going to see if they can put the presentation on the screen.
Okay.
Is Dan not going to make it? Peter? Is Dan going to make it? The guy from Gas? No, not Dan.
Yeah, I'll take care of it, sir. Madam Mayor, do you want to wait for the presentation to come up on the screen, or do you want me to just walk you all through the agenda packet?
He's working on it. I'm not sure how quickly he'll get it. Would you like him to begin? And it'll be just a few moments, hopefully.
Well, these...
15. Yes, ma'am.
The bottom line, Madam Mayor, this is, Madam Mayor, Council, this is a recommendation from the staff to address adjusting, oh, I'm sorry, it's actually an amendment to the code of ordinances suggesting an adjustment to utility gas bill rates as a result of the surge in gas prices from February's extreme weather event. As you all know, we have incurred a significant debt that was realized as a result of that price to the tune of around $35 to $40 million. Since the, since the city is a pass-through and the gas is a pass-through utility, the bottom line is that money has to be recouped from the gas customers. Customers are going to have to pay that bill. What we're trying to do is to actually amend the code of ordinances in order to smooth out that bill, so while the customers are paying that debt balance, at the least, we can take every effort that we can to smoothen it out and not have as harsh of a financial impact on gas utility customers. So with that being said, I'll walk you all through the presentation. What we are doing is introducing what we're calling the Residential Gas Utility Mitigation Program, or GUMP. As I stated on this slide, this is a result of the gas, surge in gas prices as a result of the extreme weather event in February. So what we've decided to do is calculate bills utilizing pre-event gas prices, so we can have some type of planning figure to charge customers until we can get a rate change approved. And we also have worked out financial assistance through our chief financial officer to actually figure out a way to pay that $40 million debt over a seven-year period. I should also state that thanks to the hard work of Constance Sanchez, our chief financial officer, we was able to secure a bond that's going to come at a very attractive interest rate of approximately 2.2%. Next slide. So the recovery, the way that we're going to recover the balance that's owed to the gas supplier is two ways. Number one, we're going to recover a portion of the funding through usage. In addition, we're going to have to pursue an increase in the cost of service and the PGA adder. This will allow for us to provide meaningful bill mitigation, but we also will maintain revenue stability, ensure that we get that debt balance paid. Next slide. So, again, the way that we recover funding for the cost of gas is through what we call a PGA adder. The PGA adder is a monthly cost of gas, basically what we pay for that gas, and then we have what you call a PGA adder, which is basically the cost of doing business for the city to make that gas available for the county, I'm sorry, for the city. So you have the monthly cost of gas plus PGA adder, we divide that monthly, and then that charge is actually realized on the customer's bills. For the gas utility mitigation program, the PGA is expected to average $4.70 per MCF during the cost recovery period, which reflects a $0.93 increase per MCF over the current rate. Next slide. So if I could orientate you all to this slide, on the left end of the slide, you'll see what we're currently paying or currently charging, and you'll see the minimum charge or the minimum bill is $11.65 per month, and then we have charges per MCF, where the first MCF is $0, the second MCF is $5.81, and you see that it graduates all the way up to 50 MCF, where it comes at a cost of $2.25 per MCF. However, under the new proposed GUMP rate on the right-hand side of the slide, you'll see that we actually increased that minimum charge to $18.60, and we alleviate that graduated scale. Instead of having a graduated scale, we'll have the first two MCFs as $0, and then three MCFs or more will be $2.25. Next slide. So this is how the GUMP plan actually affects the average bill for our average citizen. On the left hand of the slide, you'll see the current average bill in Corpus Christi is $16.35 in the summer, $26.86 annually, and $37.37 in the winter. On the right-hand slide, our proposed GUMP plan would increase the summer bill to $23.30, $28 annually, and $34.95 in the winter. Okay, so with that being said, Madam Mayor and Council, the staff recommends that the council approves the amendment to the code of ordinances and allow us to adopt the new rates for the gas utility to help dissolve the debt that has been incurred as a result of the extreme February weather event. And we'll stand by for any questions.
Okay, Councilman Molina?
Thank you, Mayor. Now, if and when we move forward with this, when do we plan on implementing the new rates for our users here?
Council, Mayor, Bill Mahaffey, Director of Gas Operations. Sorry, thanks, Neiman, for covering for me. So the rates would go into effect in June.
June, okay.
And the reason is, is because we need to do testing in the utility billing system, so IT needs some time to make sure that everything is programmed right in the billing system and so that everything works correctly. And they're giving me a timeframe of June 1st.
So what are we, what are the residents supposed to do between now and then? Because I've already had a few people that have called that said that they're expecting or they've received a very large bill that they weren't prepared for.
Yeah.
So what do we do in the meantime with those residents?
So, so to kind of understand the bills that they're getting, a lot of the residents are, not only was the PGA that we used was a little higher than last month, but it was obviously a discounted rate. It would have been a lot higher if we would have put the full bill in. But also, what happened is, is a lot of these residents used a lot more natural gas during that month, a lot more gas during that month, so they're not used to seeing all that usage as well. If they do have problems with paying their bill, we have a heat help program that they can look into. There's information on the city website for that to help with those bills. They'll have to qualify under certain income requirements and everything, but they can look into that program as well. But between now and June, the rates would stay the same. And, you know, it's also important to note, these rates are very affordable, you know, as far as the industry is concerned. This rate would still be one of the lowest, if not the lowest, of the top 30 cities in the state for our average usage customer, which is about 2 MCF.
I think relatively speaking, I agree with you. These are probably lower rates compared to everyone else, but you've got people here that live paycheck to paycheck and are struggling themselves to pay other bills and keep food on the table. So, aside from this program, is there any way that we can, I don't know, postpone a portion of the bill until we implement this?
Yes, and there's also, when they, when they're talking to the utility billing office, I know the utility billing office has been assisting those, you know, customers that need to be put on payment plans or have some assistance on that end as well. But I think that the large bills, especially on the residential side that we're talking about, are customers that use, and more than they're used to using in gas, you know, to stay, to stay warm.
Yeah, they had no choice. They had to do that.
Yeah, Councilman, I think that what Mr. Mahaffey said was, which is that we do have payment plans, so when they call, they can call our customer service number and defer payments over time. Their gas usage won't be as, obviously as big as it was in February, so their normal bills now will be less than that one big bill in February. So over time, they'll be able to pay that bill.
So do we have that message going out through our public information office, that there is assistance available?
Yes.
Yes, there was a public announcement made. I believe even the mayor had mentioned it, and I know we've mentioned it several times on the public...
Yeah, in each one of our media releases that we put out, there's usually a little statement of such in there. And also, just on the billing, so the June 1, there's 20 some odd, 21, I think, or 22 billing cycles. So it's going to be through the month of June when people start getting the bills. They won't get them all on June 1. So I think the billing cycles actually stretch a little over four weeks, so some people may see that first bill in July because of the billing cycles.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Peaslee?
Yeah, Bill, on this example on page 5 of your report, so you said this is, is this an example of the average gas utility bill that a customer in Corpus Christi would see? So you just, just a calculated average?
Yeah, so, looking at a mild winter, this is not considered a mild winter, and this is, you know, unprecedented.
Sure.
But during a year, mild winter year, our average for the, for the winter is around 3 MCF of usage. So that's that bottom, that's that bottom column.
Per home.
And I think the last time we looked at this, we just had the cost of service rates in there. So we, on this slide, we included an estimated purchase gas cost as well. So this would be more representative of their full bill. So it includes the estimated, I think we put on here, the $4.70 that we're estimating that the, the purchased gas would be on average for the year.
Right.
We're including that in these bills on Slide 5.
So, how did you come up with, obviously, we didn't, at least you're saying so, we didn't pass on the entire increase of the bill with this billing. Did you have some formula that you utilized?
Yes, yes, so we, we looked at the meter data for the event, and the meter data showed that during that peak... and the meter data showed that during that peak pricing, the time when it was really expensive, the residential customers used 60% of the volume during that time.
Okay.
And the commercial used the 40%, the commercial large volume. So this, the residential rate change is structured to cover 45% of that 60% of unpaid gas that the residential customers did not pay. And then the other 15%, so you got 45 and then the other 15 is the portion that we estimate that we'll recover from the residential customers through the PGA, the PGA adder, which is the, on the, it was on the third slide, where we discuss the increase on the purchase gas adjustment cost.
And what is your projection to fully recover this 15% through the adder? How long have you projected it will take to do that?
This is all projected on a seven-year.
Seven-year?
Yeah, and we're looking at, on our, and Constance is going to bring the bond financing or the junior lien, I don't remember what she called it, but that, that's going to come, I think, next week, that she's going to discuss that funding.
When, when the bond is retired in seven years, then this adder will drop off of the current bill or continue?
The adder, the adder that's, you know, that's related to this could drop off at that seven-year mark.
Okay.
I mean, that's the plan for the, for the adder.
That's your, your current plan?
The, the gas rates, now, this, these gas rates, the, the service rates, the 1860 and the 225.
Right.
Those were already in the plan to bring to y'all this year, so.
No, I realize that won't change. That's, that's the new, the new minimum. But I just wanted to know if there were plans to continue the adder permanently or if you were going to drop it whenever the bonds paid?
No, there, there's already kind of a little bit of an adder on there that covers just transmission costs and, you know, like debt related to transmission costs.
Okay.
Like line extensions, but, but that would probably be the only thing that would be included is those transmission cost adders.
Okay, on a go-forward basis, is there any plans to look at to work with our gas supplier to try to build in a hedging protection for these kind of events? And I know they're rare. It's been since 86 since we had anything comparable to this. But, you know, it could happen next year.
Yeah, they're, in the, in the contract renewal, we're working on a stronger mechanism for a fixed price if we elect to go that route. And when we get that ready, you know, we can discuss the options on that, the pros and cons to that. There's also some extra stuff that we're looking at doing with them on storage, storage-type projects. And see if we can balance out the market with that as well. And those are, there's a lot of different options on that end that we can discuss when the contract comes up.
Okay, that's great. That's all ahead. I just wanted to let you know, I now know what it costs to run a 30-kVA generator for four days. I got my bill yesterday.
We did see your bill. I thought about sending you the whole price, but then I said, nah, maybe not. But.
Very much. I appreciate that. My wife appreciates that.
And I did want to mention too, on the, on the PGA adder and the PGA cost, you know, I've been looking at other gas utilities that have historically used more of a fixed-price hedging option. And even those gas companies got hit just like we did because they obviously did not reserve enough gas for those days. And on average, our PGA costs, even with this, even with this adder included, are going to be cheaper than what they're paying going forward by probably almost a dollar, so.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve item number 15.
Mayor, can I make just one more comment?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
My apologies. Just, just, Bill, I want to thank you for the fine job you did and Dr. Young. What we just, and maybe this might be for Peter and Dr. Young, is that how we communicate this out to the, to the, to the, obviously the community? Because I've already, I've already gotten a couple of calls of individuals that they just thought they were going to get a big bump in their bill and they're really not, they're, and they saw this increase from the four to the nine and thinking that it's, it's going to be, you know, it's, it's excessive. So we just need to provide some clarity of why we do that. When we let the community know what it is that we're doing, that we're amortizing it over seven years.
And.
This might do sense.
And one thing that, you know, might help a little bit, I know it's not helping. I mean, the customers, they got a huge bill and can't afford it. We need to help those people for sure. But, you know, one thing that they need to consider is, is that that bill could have been 10 times as high as what they received.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bill. So we have a.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Okay, so we will now recess for lunch and we will take item number 17 in executive session. So per Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074. So we'll be right back.
Okay, I'll reconvene the meeting. So the council will take action on item number sixteen. The first reading ordinance appointing and reappointing municipal court judges. Councilmember Martinez, would you like to make any comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank all the applicants who applied for these positions. We had a lot of very good, very qualified applicants that came through that we interviewed. More good qualified applicants than there were spots, so we're very pleased with who we had. And we believe that the appointments will do a very good job for the city of Corpus Christi. So, thank you. With that, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance appointing Mike Alanis, Jaclyn Delano Chapa, Mark DeCook, Gail Loeb, Juliana Syracusea Rivera, and David Walsh as full-time magistrate judges of the municipal court of record in the city of Corpus Christi, Texas. I'd also like to move to appoint Gail Loeb as a presiding judge. Additionally, we'd like to, or I'd like to move to appoint Jerry Baytek, Bill Bonilla, Callie Gutman, Christopher Matt, George Pika, and Todd Robinson as part-time municipal judges of the municipal court of record in the city of Corpus Christi.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Okay, I think this, do we have a legislative update?
We have one posted, it's Tammy, she was supposed to be, Tammy, she was going to be webexed in?
Yes, I understand she's on the line.
Yeah, okay.
It's on here.
Yeah, okay, great. Was that you, Tammy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, okay, good. We have a PowerPoint and everything today, so.
Oh, great.
We're gonna just, Mayor and council, each week, we're most likely gonna have a legislative session, item, from now on. As Tammy will show us, we're kinda getting to the thick of things with the legislatures. Okay, Tammy, go ahead, thank you.
Yes, sir. As the city manager started, stated, we are definitely getting to the point where the legislature is rolling at full speed and, I would say, in overdrive. Next slide. As I have mentioned to those of you that we've spoken with about the session, COVID-19 has really altered the operations of the Capitol during the session and the rhythm of the session. Things got off to a really slow start because of high caseloads in Austin and other factors. And we are now starting to see committees work in normal time. But at the same time, operations of the Capitol are still very different than what you would see in a normal session. Number one, if you're gonna be doing any business in the Senate, you are required to go through the testing process on the north side of the Capitol. You are also only allowed to enter the north side of the Capitol. You can exit any door. So you'll, each day, it started with the National Guard folks on the north side of the Capitol with a quick rapid COVID test. And then you go on, but then that way, depending on offices, some offices are requiring that, some offices are not, and that even varies within our delegation. And so, important to keep that in mind with trips coming up. And then, the rhythm of session is different because normally, in a regular session, you know, the visitor's garage is packed by 8:30 in the morning and you're searching all over downtown Austin to find parking. I haven't seen it more than half full to date. You are starting to see a few more in the Capitol, but it's still empty compared to what a normal session would be. What we are seeing is the state versus city dynamic is still very present. It's hard to believe that we are actually halfway through session because we're only just now starting to hear substantive bills. But even in that case, next slide. You're very much starting to see that dynamic in full force. Next slide. Some of the big bills that we're watching for, and all of these are being talked about this week or have been talked about in the past two weeks. One of the biggest that we are concentrating on is the city advocacy censorship bill or no taxpayer-funded lobbying. We expected that bill to start in the Senate with SB 10 from betting court and local government, but the House is gonna go first on Thursday with HB 749 from Representative Middleton in a state affairs hearing. And also, just added late last night is another bill on that subject, HB 3687 from Gio Caprileon. The Caprileon bill was actually more of a transparency bill that would require cities to publicly disclose and post on their website their lobby contracts and their legislative agenda and that type of stuff. We don't have a problem with transparency. But SB 10 and SB 749, HB 749, would take away the city's ability to lobby. In some of the bills that we've been seeing introduced, elected officials would have to be invited to the Capitol to come and lobby. Some of them target IGR, having cities having IGR staff. So it will be important to, for the cities to actually be present on Thursday and tell the good story of the things that we lobby on that are not related to taxes. That is, the bumper sticker kind of that goes along with this bill is that cities are advocating for increasing taxes. When I think in Corpus Christi, we've got a really good story to tell and the fact that we lobby for PI funding, globally for air quality monitoring funding. We've worked with NAM Corpus Christi to get their engineering program established. We work on economic development issues. We've worked with Domaire on different initiatives to get to start their Small Business Development Center and other initiatives at Domaire. We work across our community on a variety of issues that affect quality of life in the coastal bin. And I think, I think we've got to, we've got to be present and tell that story. In that same hearing, they're going to hear three bills on the governor's priority that go, the tagline is defund the police. But, and no city in Texas wants to defund their police department. And this is, as Senator Hennaholtz talked about it in a hearing on SB 23 this morning, a solution looking for a problem. And there are many unintended consequences in this bill. We, I visited with several of you about this bill, these bills, and know that the intent of council is to increase funding for our police department, increase staffing for our police department, working on the new training academy, et cetera. But some of the unintended consequences in this bill are things like changes in collective bargaining that, contracts that may affect budgets year over year. They want to get into things like overtime. They want to get into things like staffing levels. There are, one of the things that Galveston has taken the lead and we have helped on is to talk about the need for a disaster exemption in this bill. So that coastal communities that might get hit by a hurricane and see huge losses in property tax revenue or other loss in population, et cetera, would have the flexibility that they need in those times. So what is being tagged as defund the police is really state-level control over our budgets. And in many cases, in its various proposals, it comes with stiff penalties. Either by sending that budget to an election for voters to vote on or sending, or withholding sales tax from the comptroller's office until you rectify your budget. So that is one of those things that is not an easy, it's not an easy bill to advocate on because none of us want to defend our police departments. But it does, but what we are trying to do is, is discuss some of the unintended consequences. And I've been visiting with Chief Markle and I've worked with finance to do a 10-year look back at our funding in both police and fire because there are some additional bills that would cover all of public safety rather than just police. The bills being under-considered this week are just police. But, so we're working through those issues. And it's still, but I don't think the defund the police issue is one that cities are gonna be out front testifying on. This is more of an effort where you work behind the scenes with the offices to work through the concerns and talk about, and give them real examples. In, in the case of SB 23, that bill has seen two substitute versions this week and each one is better than the last. So they have included a Senate or a disaster exception. There are still some improvements that could be made to that. But you are starting to see some improvements as they listen to cities and TML with concerns. And then, the third bill that I talk about is one that we filed written comment on yesterday, and that is a debt restriction bill in the House that was in Ways and Means. And that would take away cities' ability to issue debt unless it was voter-approved debt. And it would move everything except for voter-approved debt to the MNO side of the property tax rate rather than the INS side of the property tax rate. So that combined with the revenue cap that we have from two years ago is, is a big issue for cities. And so Heather Holbert put together some written comment on that yesterday, and we filed that. There were also some cities that testified on that and are working to work with Chairman Burrows on that issue and see if we can get that bill improved or stopped. And then, week before last, we filed written testimony from the mayor on HB 3, which is a pandemic response bill that would remove the role of cities from a statewide pandemic response plan. So in normal disasters, cities are, cities or counties are the local disaster manager with authorities designated from the governor. And this would be a total top-down response to that. Do I have any questions before I move on?
Michael, Councilman Hunter.
Tammy, sorry, I think I'm having trouble understanding this. On SB 23 and the affiliated bills, is the governor in support of them? Or are you saying that the governor?
The governor is very much in support of that. This is one of the governor's emergency priority issues. These are, something is gonna pass on these bills. So it's not like we're gonna kill these bills. These are, these are bills that are gonna pass. This is part of the back the blue pledge that the governor had during election season. And this is largely targeted at Austin and some of the adjustments their budget last session, or last cycle. And so, when I say it's better to work behind the scenes, it's because nobody, nobody wants to defund their police. That's not what this is about. This is really about state-level control into very detailed nuances of the city budget and the department, the police department's budget.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Tammy, who's carrying the defund the police, SB 23?
SB 23 is Senator Huffman. And there's three different bills on, in state affairs on Tuesday. One is from Representative Cody Harris. And the other two, let me pull up the committee agenda. It's Representative Harris, Representative Ben Lamont, and Representative Lawson, and Representative, yeah, that's it. Representatives Lawson, Lamont, and Cody Harris on Thursday.
Councilman Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Tammy, on the, the city censorship bills or not taxpayer-funded lobbying, you had mentioned that, that in this legislation, and I want to be, kinda be more specific about it, it would prevent any city official or elected official from lobbying the, or visiting with the people in Austin? Is that what you said?
There are various different proposals, and there's about four different bills, four or five different bills filed. There are various levels of censorship. But it would take away your ability to hire legislative consultants. And it is, in a couple of the bills, is very questionable about whether the city could hire an IGR professional to track this for you and keep track of all these bills. And then, some of them even create a civil action where if a citizen would view that you have lobbied against a citizen's best interest, they could actually sue the city and get attorney's fees for it. And, and so each one varies. I can send the TML summaries around for those bills if you would like. And as I said, right now, SB 10 from betting court seems to be the vehicle in the Senate. That would limit it only to cities and counties. HB 749, that's gonna be heard in state affairs on Thursday, actually applies to almost all political subdivisions. School districts, junior college districts, hospital, I mean, like, across the board. Political subdivisions that receive taxpayer dollars. So that's a broader tent.
If you can, please provide information on it.
And 749 would actually go so far as to say that cities could not contribute to organizations that hire lobbyists. So even things like the chamber could be, we could, we could potentially not be at a place where we could not contribute to the chamber. We could be at a place where we could not contribute to the EDC. They've had lobbyists at different times in the past. Or TML, NLC, National League of Cities. There's wide-ranging consequences.
Okay, if you can give us that summary for each one of those, that'd be preferable so we can concentrate on which ones to oppose. Are any of our legislative representatives from this area in support of any of these?
No. Senator Kohlkorst did vote for the bill in the Senate last time. This is gonna come out of the Senate, this is gonna have no problems passing the Senate, and it's gonna be on party lines. This was killed in the House last time, and that's where it'll, that's where the battle will be again this time.
Okay, on the SB 23, I'm assuming this is based on the reaction to what Austin was doing specifically. I don't know of any other city that was doing something with regards to the defunding police in Texas, but I could be wrong. Is that? Is that, were there any other cities that had some similar issues or similar policies to Austin?
No, and really, when you get into the actual details of what Austin did, they still have the highest per capita staffing in the state. They actually gave a raise to their police department. It's a, it's a kind of a misnomer about what they did, but yes, it is targeted at Austin.
Okay.
It's a bumper sticker bill, as we've seen in many sessions passed.
Well, both of, both of these items are.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Oh, here, one last thing, are we gonna have a legislative day for the city?
That is on my next slide.
Okay, thank you.
Just, or the one after this. Just looking at a couple of, this is, next slide, please. There you go. Corpus Christi priorities, D.I.A. funding is in both House and Senate budget bills. The budget will be moving through consideration in the next couple of weeks, so we'll monitor that to make sure that stays the same. Air quality funding, monitoring funding is in both House and Senate bills. Our sales tax refund bill, transparency bill, has been introduced in both sides and we are, I'm actually meeting with Focus Advocacy here in just a little bit to discuss a path forward for those bills and to see if we can get hearings and get those bills moving. We're very happy to have both Hinojosa and Herrera introduce those bills on the House and Senate side. Next slide. Events to come. So I'm hearing maybe as early as next week, or it could be the following week, that there will kind of be a TUIA bill where the House Insurance Committee takes up and considers several reform bills that have been introduced. As soon as I have a date for that hearing, I will be sharing that. I know that is an issue that several of you are passionate about. The chamber will have a coastal bin to Austin today, which is what we have always participated in. It will, in the age of COVID, take on a different, a different appearance instead of everybody being in the Capitol and going from office to office to office. Because big groups are very limited. I know when we were doing some meetings last week when we met with Senator Hinojosa, the first thing he said was, "Oh, this is a big group. We normally limit our meetings to three people." So in recognition of that and trying to be sensitive to those needs of staff and Capitol employees, the chamber is gonna have a ballroom reserved at the Sheraton in Austin. The hotel does have capacity restrictions still in place, so they only have about thirty-five total spots and they have five, we have reserved five spots for city participants for that event on April 21st. May 31st, of course, will be the legislature adjourned signing die. There will be at least one special section for redistricting because the census has been delayed and they are not gonna receive that information until September 30th or after. The big question mark is, will there be other special sessions? Because there has been so much time consumed with unexpected events in this session, everybody expected this to be a COVID session, everybody expected this to be the taxpayer lobbying and several other issues to be, take up a lot of time, expected it to be a big budget session, which actually, the budget is looking much better. And of course, with the American Rescue Plan money coming from the federal government, the state will be in better shape as well. But it's, what's yet to be determined is how many of these other big-ticket issues like ERCOT and the other effects of winter freeze, if they can't get some of the governor's priorities done, will he call back for a special session on, say, police defund or something like that? So there are still a lot of unknowns in this session. And this session is really just, even for Capitol veterans that have been around for decades, I've heard so many conversations and had so many conversations in the last couple of weeks as I've been coming finally, that people just don't have a good feeling for where the legislature is going, what the big plan is. You know, last session, there was absolute total locked-up unity among the big three, the governor, lieutenant governor, and speaker. And there've been, there've been some definitely public skirmishes over ERCOT and other things. So there's, there's still some questions about what the final plan looks like. So that's all the more important why we have to remain engaged and why, you know, we spend so many hours up here and the long days and so that we make sure we're protecting the city's interests. Any questions?
Tammy, could you go back a slide? Let's see, is this, yeah, the air quality monitoring funding. So is that bill just to provide financing to keep us even with where we are now? Or is this to add additional air quality monitoring stations here?
Well, this is a, Councilman Petzley, this is a longtime effort. This was, this was literally our number-one priority last session. And starting in the mid-'90s, TCEQ had what was known as Ryder Seven in the budget bills, but it was a program that provided funding to near non-attainment communities like Corpus Christi.
Right.
For communities that are, you know, near the bubble for being a non-attainment, to have monitoring programs and other programs in place to keep their communities in air attainment with the national air quality standards from the EPA. And so, in, at the end of the 17th session, the governor vetoed that funding. And so we had to work really hard last session with the other near non-attainment communities, with the port of Corpus Christi, with Port Industries of Corpus Christi, to, and the local air quality, they're now called, it used to be the Air Quality Group. It's now the Coastal Bin Air Quality Partnership. And so we lobbied as a community to get that funding restored, to keep those air quality monitors in place. And this is, we kept that as a priority to make sure going into what could have been a really tough budget year for the state, that that money, that funding remained so that that is there as a tool for our industry to remain in attainment because there have been multiple studies done that show exactly how expensive it could be for our community to not remain in attainment with national air quality standards.
So, do you have any idea?
And the EPA is looking at tightening those standards.
Do you have any idea why the governor vetoed it?
It was really, it was before I was here, but from everything that we could learn when we worked on it two years ago and that Tom had done before I came on board with the city, it really was wrapped up in a couple of other programs that the governor didn't like and they vetoed all of them in one fell swoop rather than separate the good from the bad.
Well, this is one that I would highly recommend that the council get behind and that we even look at adopting a resolution, Mayor, in support of this. This is important to our community and something we've been working on for a long time. These air quality monitors are very important. They're very important to the northwest area, especially where most of the industrial area is located. So, anyway, I'll just make that comment, but.
It was included in the legislative agenda, so that is part of the resolution that was passed by council.
Yeah.
And then we did file, we did file testimony in both the House Appropriations Committee and the Senate Finance Committee. And we did that jointly with the Air Quality Partnership and Port Industries. And I'm happy to send, I believe I had sent them to council in a previous update, but I'm happy to send them again.
No, that's okay. I know we did that, but I just think we need to stay on top of it so that when it gets to the governor's desk, it doesn't receive some spurious veto because it got attached to something that has nothing to do with air quality monitoring.
We are acutely aware of that issue and will be monitoring it completely through the process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay, anyone else have any questions? Or Tammy, is there, are we at the end of your presentation? I'm sorry, didn't mean to.
No, we are. I did, I think we've made it through all the slides and just answering any questions that y'all have.
Okay. Okay, I don't, I don't think there are any other questions then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I think we have no further business, so I will adjourn the meeting.